Welcome everyone to the Tuesday, February 14th, 2023 Board of Education meeting. Happy Valentine's Day. Thank you for spending your Valentine's Day with us. We appreciate it. We always begin our meetings with a Pledge of Allegiance. Tonight, we have Cub Scout, PAC 1703 here visiting, and I asked them to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Boys, if you want to come forward here and we can begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
(inaudible) Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, boys. Okay, we begin with recognition. We have a lot of fun recognition tonight.
We do have several items of recognition this evening. We're going to start with our All-State athletes from this past fall. Mr. Fultcher.
Good evening, Dr. Macheski, President Schmidt, Board of Education. Thank you for allowing me to be here tonight to introduce our Fall All-State athletes. We had 14 total All-State athletes between Troy High and Athens High School this past fall, which is a great number from a number of teams. Ten of those student athletes said they were able to be here tonight. I haven't been able to check everybody in, but I believe most of our 10 are in. I'm going to read all 14 names in alphabetical order. And when, students, when your name is called, come on up to receive a certificate. Mom and dad can come up and get a picture with you up here, and we'll have all of the student athletes stay standing up front so that we can get some pictures. So before I bring our Fall All-State athletes up, everyone has seen lots of great performances by these athletes on the field, on the court, on the course. They have been phenomenal athletes over the course of the season, recognized for their success. What a lot of people don't see is the hard work and dedication that they put in outside of practice, outside of the season, working relentlessly, tirelessly over the course of the summer, in the off-season, and all of that hard work has paid off for these athletes. So I'd like to begin by bringing up our first Fall All-State athlete, a senior from Troy High, Srihari Ananthalan, First Team All-State Doubles for the Boys Tennis Team. Next, we have junior from Troy High, Derek Blackwell, All-State Tennis Team as well. Next, we have senior from Troy High, Carter Kuzmato, Third Team All-State on the Boys Soccer Team. Carter is not here tonight because he's playing a basketball game tonight for Troy High School. Next, we have Riley Hayden, Senior from Troy High, First Team All-State on the Girls Golf Team. Next, we have Olivia Hemola, Senior from Athens, First Team Girls Golf. If Olivia looks like a pro doing this, it's because not only was she All-State this year as a senior, but this is her fourth year of being an All-State. To earn All-State status one time is an incredible feat. Four times, all four years in high school, is phenomenal. So Olivia finishes an incredible career in golf at Athens. So congratulations, Olivia. Next, we have Rashil Kagathala, Senior from Troy High. First Team Doubles, partner with Srihari. Next, we have Derek Kim, freshman from Troy High, All-State Doubles in Tennis. Next up, we have Nish Palapu. Nish is a junior from Troy High, All-State Doubles. Our next student is not able to be with us tonight, Senior from Troy High, First Team All-State, John Palamino on the Boys Soccer Team. Our next athlete is Vishva Ravishankar, Junior from Troy High, All-State in Boys Cross Country. Next, we have Daniel Watkins, a Senior from Athens, Second Team All-State on the Boys Soccer Team. His coach, Todd Hugh, is with us as well. Our next athlete is not able to be with us tonight. Ava Weeks is a junior at Athens, First Team All-State on the Girls Golf Team. Ava is busy at Athens with Charity Week events tonight. Our next athlete is also not able to be with us tonight, Darius Whiteside, a Senior from Troy High, was First Team All-State Defense on the Football Team, and Darius is also playing basketball for Troy High tonight. And our final athlete, and I don't see Nick, our final athlete is Nick Worrell, Senior from Troy High on the Boys Soccer Team. Nick was not just First Team All-State, but also part of the Dream Team. So, successful season. So once again, our Fall All-State athletes, congratulations to all of you for your accomplishments and all that you've done for your teams and your schools. So congratulations. Thank you, everyone.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Fultcher. Congratulations again to our All-State athletes. Next on recognition this evening is our Mission Moment. Here to introduce that group is Chris Greifors, Assistant Superintendent for Elementary Instruction.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Tonight in our Mission Moment, we'd like to honor eight teachers and one fearless leader that represented the Troy School District at LitCon, the National Reading Recovery and Early Literacy Conference at the end of January. Literacy Specialist Karen Bush and Holly Gordon presented how intentional coaching leads to transformation. Literacy Specialist Ashley Pelosima and ELD Specialist Sue Reed from Waddles presented ways to collaborate in order to accelerate the multilingual learner in literacy. Classroom Teachers Sarah Provost, Alyssa Faivat, Kristen Marcassio, and Erin Miller presented on how a deeper understanding of literacy processing theory helped to provide more responsive instruction in the classroom. So this evening, I would like to bring forward the eight teachers and again, one fearless leader, Chris Pietrowski, Karen Bush, Holly Gordon, we'll bring them up and then just kind of give certificates if that works, Ashley Pelosima, Sue Reed, Sarah Provost, Alyssa Faivat, Kristen Marcassio, and Erin Miller. One thing that, just to point out to the board this evening, this group represents our literacy specialist in our department, which has, reading recovery has been in our place and a point of pride in our district since 1989. So this group works tirelessly to support our students and our staff in the buildings.
Next on recognition this evening is our Student Spotlight. Here to introduce our Student Spotlight recipient, Mr. Thomas Butcher.
Thank you, Dr. Macheski and Board members. With me here today is Troy High Senior Jeffrey Wu. In addition to his academic success, he has competed on the varsity cross-country team, and he performs as principal cellist in the Troy High Symphony Orchestra. But furthermore, the reason he is being spotlighted today is because of his filmmaking talents and his leadership as president of the Troy High Film Club. I first became a fan of Jeffrey's two years ago when he casted me in one of his short films. It was largely a cameo, so I can't take too much credit. And I say that because after thousands of views online, that film won a Student Production Award at the state level and was later nominated at the national level by the National Academy of Television Arts and Sciences. Those are the same people who give out the Emmy Awards. Can we give him a hand for that? So, I've put together a reel of some of the projects Jeffrey has worked on. You're going to see a lot of hype videos that feature our athletes, some music videos that he made for ACOM, remember him, and of course, a look at some of his award-winning action short films. But before we play that, I just want to mention how valuable a student like Jeffrey is. What you see in a finished video project is just the tip of the iceberg. I mean, yes, he's put a lot of hours into this, but also through these projects, he has created opportunities for so many others to gain experience in production. I've seen him lead his peers on set. You've got actors, lighting, sound assistance. And also, him with the Troy High Film Club just produced the Survivor video series for Activist Week, contributing to that final amount raised. So to me, only good things can come from a student who is able to pursue their passions. Every step of the way, when Jeffrey works on a video, others in his community have benefited, whether it's another student who wants to learn filmmaking, or you're the athlete that's being featured, or you're raising money for charity. It's good to see. So pretty much every student who I know at Troy High right now, I know because I knew him first. I think you've helped to lay the foundation of filmmaking at Troy High, and I'm excited to see those results come for years to come. So thank you for everything you do, Jeffrey. So Jeffrey, you've made so many hype videos, and now we get to watch a hype video about you. Let's take a look at some of Jeffrey's work. The video talents of Jeffrey Wu, everyone. Transition cinematography fight sequences. I want to open for any questions and comments, but first, I know you've got plans to continue pursuing filmmaking. So how are you going to apply these experiences moving forward?
Hello? So, I feel like I learned a lot from, you know, just like filming. And I started filming because like, I was always interested in like, videos and, you know, and so in like, fifth grade, I just started making YouTube videos on my iPad, you know, I was that kid, you know? And I just kept doing it, like, and, you know, and it moved on, it moved on from me just talking to the camera to, you know, me trying to get like, better shots or trying to, you know, make this transition cooler. And then I moved on to short films and I made an action film, and that's when I, you know, casted Mr. Butcher. I think, obviously, that all the technical experience, obviously, learning how to edit and use my camera is super important. But I think one of the most valuable things I'm going to take from, you know, being with the Creative Guild and like, working with Mr. Butcher is learning how to collaborate with people. I feel like that's the most important thing, even outside of filming. Like, I think collaboration is the most important thing. None of those videos that you saw there could have been possible if I didn't collaborate with anyone. So yeah.
I have a question. So if there's young kids like the Boy Scouts out there who want to get into filmmaking or videos, what would you suggest to them? How would they start?
I'd just say, just start filming. Like, obviously, my first, like, 10 videos, they were probably not good. Like, they probably sucked. They were not good videos at all. So I think it's just, it's something where you have to keep, like, making more videos. I feel like a lot of people are scared to make, like, start because it's going to suck. And the reality is that it is going to suck at first, but you will get better with time and with, keep, like, continuing to make videos, so.
How many people do you usually work with in a project?
Well, like, for a hype video, usually I just get, usually it's just me and maybe like, two other people helping me film. And then, depending on, like, I guess, like, the workload, maybe I'll edit, but I'll also have other people edit the video as well. But for a short film, like an action film, that takes probably like, maybe 10 to 15 people in total, because you have to think about, like, the pre-production aspect, like, writing it and choreographing the fight scene, and then the production aspect, which is like, obviously, like, the cameraman and the actors and the makeup, and then the post-production, which you have to, sometimes you have to add like, audio, so you need another team for that. So, yeah, I'd say it's about 10 to 15.
And how long does it take you to make one of those? Just so that people, when they know, like, when you see something, that they can recognize, how much effort has gone into that?
The, the action film that we recently made, not recently, but like, last year, the most recent one, took like, half a year. Obviously, it wouldn't have taken half a year if we didn't, we weren't like, super busy with school, but like, but, like, yeah, we had to, basically, we started in November, and I think we, no, we shot it in November, but we started like, late October, like, choreographing it, because we obviously have to choreograph the fight scenes. But then we kept, we had to make the music, and we had to reshoot some shots that didn't look good, and that dragged out all the way to May, so.
Well, thank you for showcasing just the process for people, because I think it's part of the journey.
Go ahead.
So tell us about your future plans. How do you envision continuing with your filmmaking as you leave high school?
Well, no matter what, whether it's my job or not, I'm going to continue to film. That is something I want to keep doing in my life. But I guess, obviously, the goal is to, like, make filmmaking my job, but obviously, I know that, like, that might not be realistic. So I think, for sure, I want to keep filming. And also, just continuing to put my hands on a camera and, you know, just start taking videos and taking photos and stuff. So, yeah, like, I'll definitely join, like, film clubs in college, and I'll just see where that takes me, because, I mean, you never know, like, you could, you could, you know, connect with really important people and they could, you could take off.
Thank you. We've got a certificate for you. Okay. Well, that was fun. We have one more item of recognition before we take a break here, and that's to let everyone know that it is Principal Appreciation Month. Throughout the state of Michigan, February has traditionally been celebrated as Principal Appreciation Month in recognition of the outstanding work of our building-level educational leaders. And Troy, we're fortunate to have an exemplary group of principals dedicated to the success of every student in the district. This evening, we'll pass a resolution, hopefully, I assume we will, to commend our elementary and secondary principals for their exceptional commitment to excellence in the Troy School District. And I want to add to what was written here, I just want to thank our principals specifically for the work that they did in helping us pass the bond, because the principals are really, they're, they are kind of our primary contact for the community in each building, and they use that position to make sure that all of our community members understood what was at stake, what we were trying to do, and what the benefits would be for that bond, and that was reflected in that positive vote. And I know that if it wasn't for the heavy lifting that our principals did, there's a good chance that that bond would not have passed. So for this year, we're particularly appreciative of that specific effort that they put in, and that was about a six-month effort to really push that. So I wanted to make sure the community understands the amount of work that went into that. So may I have a resolution, please? Ms. Nae, go ahead.
Whereas energetic and inspiring school leadership is essential if teachers, schools, and districts are to ensure that all Troy students are college and career-ready, and whereas K-12 school principals play a vital role in the success of students and act as the liaison between the school and the community it serves, ensuring that the parents and the community are aware of the students' and school achievements, and whereas Troy School District Principals are dedicated, quality educational professionals committed to providing sound leadership and guidance to their staff and students, and whereas this, whereas during this month, we join with educators, parents, and students throughout Michigan to raise awareness of the importance of educational leadership and to recognize and thank all principals working in Troy for their exemplary service. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Troy Board of Education officially recognizes February as Principal Appreciation Month in Troy and thanks our dedicated building leaders for all they do for our students and staff.
Thank you. Resolution by Ms. Nae, supported by Dr. Wilson. Would anyone else like to add a comment? Seeing everyone comfortable, all those in favor, please say yes. Yes, resolution passes. Thank you. Again, thank you to all of our principals. I don't know if we have any here tonight, but. Okay, so at this point, that concludes the recognition portion of the meeting. We're going to take a five-minute recess, and that's so that if you don't want to sit through all the business, you can sneak out the door. You're welcome to stay if you want, but we'll re-adjourn in about five minutes. So thank you. Okay, we're going to continue with additions and deletions.
There are none this evening.
All right, thank you. And then I would like to move up our report. Our TCCHS rep needs to leave early today, so I'm going to give her a chance to give us the report there. So I'm going to start with you, and then we'll continue with the rest. Go ahead, dive right in there.
Hello, audience, or most of the audience. Troy College and Career High School is proud to announce that tomorrow at TCC, seniors will meet with representatives from Oakland Community College. By the end of the day, all interested students will have applied to OCC, completed their financial aid forms, and taken placement exams. In April... April, TCC will host our first-ever arts and musical festival. Students, artists, and magician, er, sorry, musicians, will present a showcase of our work for the community to enjoy. Dates and time are to be determined. Uh, over the past month, TCC, using grant funds from Oakland schools, have transformed our spaces with social, emotional health in mind. New low-impact lighting, comfortable seating, journaling supplies, manipulative stress relievers, and furniture have been purchased for student use. Ms. Clifford, our career facilitator, is hosting a career fair for all interested high school students and their families on Tuesday, March 21st, from 6:30 to 8:15. Representatives from the trades, local unions, manufacturers, security, and network security companies will be present. And with that, Happy Valentine's Day, and thank you.
Okay, all right, great. Thank you.
Make sure we hear the dates for the arts festival.
All right, so that moves us back to our regular agenda here. Um, and we start with public communication on agenda items. We have two this evening. Um, just as a reminder, this is a chance to address the board, but it's not a dialogue. If there's any response that needs to come, um, we will follow up with you on that. Each speaker has, uh, three minutes. Dr. Wilson, I'll give you, um, a heads up when you hit about 30 seconds to go, so you kind of know when to wind down. We ask that you, um, you end at your three-minute point. Um, so the first person I have is Mrs. Tracy Owens. Good evening.
Hi. Um, I know is that the board workshop on Tuesday, I presented everybody and also emailed everybody with some facts about, um, getting rid of honors classes. I told people I would come up here and, a week, we've had 456 parents in the district sign our, um, petition to keep honors classes. I really wish that everybody on this board, because I know I met with a couple of you a couple of years ago, would include parents in some of these decisions, have open conversations with us, have dialogue, because that's really what parents want. Parents don't want to come up here, I don't want to be here on a Valentine's night, but we want our voices to be heard, and I think parents are feeling like they can't. Parents are afraid to come up to the board and speak because they're, like, there's no point. Teachers have come out against the removing of honors, that's how it came out. Even the teachers are like, what's the point? What's the point of talking to the board anymore? Nobody's up there listening to us. And I know that a lot of people are seeing this go on, because it goes on on social media. So these comments are available for most of you guys to see. But for me, this is just something that really, it, it's hard to swallow. When you have a child who you know is going to struggle, who's struggling in school, who's struggling in reading and English, who comes home and they feel embarrassed, and that's why I'm, I guess, so invested in this. Even if my kids aren't here, when they go to high school, I'm doing this for all the other children who are like him, and I know how hard it is. And, um, just wanted to point out from one of the studies that, um, heterogeneous ability groups can have a negative impact on students' achievements, participation, motivation, and self-esteem when that's applied to particular disciplines such as reading. A study placed the students into mixed ability groups in which students took turns doing read-alouds and discussing the text. This study found that low-ability students suffered from lowered academic achievement as a result of being in a mixed ability reading group. The low-ability students that were studied during the group meetings were found to have read less than the other students. The study concluded that these students did not reach the academic achievement they would have if they had been placed in groups with the same reading level. Um, this type of interaction with mixed ability group will have a negative effect on self-esteem, leading to a loss of motivation for learning. And I will say, like, right now with my child, when he gets pulled out and he's in a group with somebody else who has dyslexia and they're working together, he loves it. He's amazing at it. His teacher's like, his participation level, there's no crying, there's no tears, there's no having a fit because he can't do what other kids can do. And I really hope that you guys will take in consideration those children who can't have those high-achieving goals. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Owens. Uh, then I have, um, Alina.
Alani.
Alani. Dallas? Dellus?
Dellus.
Dellus. Good evening.
Good evening. Um, I have a ninth grader at Troy Athens. He is in honors English. He is in the, um, superintendent's advisory board. He is in marching band, band, um, he's in Model UN. He's involved in many activities, and I would be very, very sad if you took away the, the chance for him to continue in honors classes. He works very hard. It doesn't come easy. He's doing homework sometimes, you know, after activities, 11:30, 12 o'clock, but he wants to be in honors classes. I don't feel that parents have gotten, you know, any chance to speak up on this. And I know that, um, a lot of my friends who have students in Troy Athens and Troy High School, they are immigrants from other countries. Not one of them, not one of them, has ever said, and we've discussed this many times, "Oh, I want the honors classes to go away." This is all about, I feel that anything that is ever talked about anymore is diversity. We are a very diverse, um, school district, and we are a very high-achieving school district. And not, we, we're not going to all be like this. And it has to do with hard work. And it has to do with, you know, how much they put into it. If they don't want to be in an honors class, or if they can't, then they can't. We're not all even. We're not all even as adults. We're not all even as children. And it has to do with the work that we put into it. So I really hope that you take into consideration and ask the parents if they want these honors classes to go away, because everybody I've talked to, not one, whether their child is in honors or not, has said they think it's a good idea. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, that moves us to item five, which is our general consent agenda. This consists of A, the minutes of the January 3rd, 2023 Board of Education Workshop, B, the minutes of the January 17th, 2023 Board of Education Meeting, C, the treasures report from December of 2022, D, schools closed to open enrollment, E, schools of choice 105 and 105C, and then the OCS BA legislative priorities and bylaw amendments. May I have a resolution, please? Mr. Hoff's hand is up.
Be it therefore resolved that the Troy Board of Education takes action to approve items A, B, C, D, E, and F on the consent agenda.
Thank you. I have a resolution by, uh, Mr. Hoff, supported by Ms. Al, um, Alish. So I've got too many names that are similar. I'm going to have to go to first names so I can say it correctly. Um, uh, any questions or comments on the consent agenda? All right, seeing none, all those in favor, please say yes. Yes, opposed, say no. Thank you. Resolution passes. Okay, that moves us to personnel.
There's none this evening?
Thank you. Uh, and then that moves us to curriculum.
Yes, we have a report this evening from, um, Mrs. Christine DiPilato and Mrs. Natalie Hazerbrook.
Good evening. Hi.
Good evening. See if this opens up for us. Right. So, um, good evening, everyone. Uh, thanks for having us tonight. Uh, this evening Natalie and I are here to talk through some updates to the course description book for the 23-24 school year. Um, annually, we have an opportunity to work with you as the board, to share with you updates in our course description book. We had a robust conversation during our board workshop where we went over in detail all of the changes. This evening, we're going to just overview the process and then provide some updates on some of the more large changes that are taking place as we look at next year. Um, I think that, just kind of getting started, we talked a little bit about the process for updating the course description book. Specifically, we have department heads at both of our high schools who work collaboratively across Troy High School and Troy Athens, um, to make changes, to update, and ensure that all of our, um, offerings for students are up to date and accurate, um, also that they are viable courses that we've taught year after year. They also look to make sure that if there are any changes in content, that that is reflected appropriately in the course description. Um, that's a collaborative process that goes through a process that we call in Troy the High School Curriculum Council. They actually come together, they present to each other, they vet the, they vet the courses, um, and then they provide feedback to each other. And that is a process that we go through that really begins in October and goes all the way through, um, February, through this time.
So I'm just going to, uh, remind the board of a few key updates for this year, um, namely, the new course, English IX, the new course, Chemistry I, and then the updated course description for teen sports, our phys ed course. Um, so, um, as you, as you know, um, we are in the process where we regularly review curriculum every nine years or so in Troy. So our review of our ELA structure and courses began pre-COVID. Um, and what we found is that our current, uh, coursework limits the options for some students. So there are some students who, depending on what class they get placed in, in ninth grade, um, their opportunities to take more advanced coursework are limited, and those choices are not open up for them. Um, and we truly believe that all students should be prepared to make a choice about their future coursework. We don't want to be gatekeepers for that choice. So if students feel that they want the opportunity to take an advanced course, we feel like they should be prepared and poised to do that. Um, the other piece is that current thinking in the field suggests that our instruction in ELA should include much more choice for students, um, and then also specific feedback to students on their work. So, um, you know, if we think about a traditional ELA course where we give the writing assignment and then students are given a grade at the end of the, um, at the end of that assignment, um, that's really not what we're going for. We know the importance of the process and giving feedback all along the way. Um, and also, too, we know that when students have a choice of what they're able to read, it leads to more reading and more volume. Um, one of the things that we've learned through this process is volume of reading is one of the number-one things that helps students, um, be successful on things like the SAT, um, because it builds vocabulary, um, and obviously many other reasons. Um, so that moving away from an emphasis on specific books taught to an emphasis on developing readers and writers who are skilled. So, um, it's not kind of where everybody needs to read the fountainhead. It's, there might be a few key titles, but then students get the opportunity to choose much of what they read. I mean, it's, the emphasis is placed on not knowing a certain title, but rather being skilled and being able to apply those skills in anything they read. Um, this, uh, English IX course will increase the opportunities for all students to progress from current skill levels, and you know as a board that our work with our middle school, um, around this with moving from a workshop model to, um, all students, um, learning together is that all students do progress. Um, also, too, this change will lead to more advanced placement if students choose that route. Um, I kind of already mentioned that this will be a continuation of our pre-K through eight literacy programming. Um, and when, when we talk about our literacy program, the gist is that it's responsive teaching. So we have a group of students in our class who have varied needs, um, and it would be next to impossible to sort them in a neat and tidy way where we could teach one group all the same thing. So it's about responding to the learners who are in front of us. Uh, just a couple process things. We have a, a leadership team at the ninth grade level who's been working to develop our curriculum. Um, we also have been developing, because we know this represents a significant change for our teachers, we've been developing a system of support to ensure that they feel prepared to meet the needs of all students. Uh, we have a partnership, um, a longstanding partnership with Teachers College, who's working with our high school teachers. We had an opportunity to see a lab site in one of our high school ELA courses, um, to, um, support our teachers in the, this new teaching style. Also, we have literacy coaches, um, ELA teachers who have an hour or two of release time to work with teachers, um, to do collaborative planning, uh, to think about their, their teaching practice and their pedagogy. We also have regular opportunities now for stu-, or for teachers to observe one another, um, to collaborate, um, regular collaboration now with things like our Late Start, um, is, are so important. Um, and then also, too, we want to share with parents the rationale for this change and then the opportunities for students going forward. So parents will be able to ask questions at our ninth grade parent nights, um, which will take place at, um, Athens and Troy High in March.
Can I, could I interrupt? It might be easier if anyone has any questions. We can ask any ELA questions, and then you can, if that's okay. It just seems like that probably makes the most sense. Does, does anyone have any questions for the team about ELA?
Not a question, but more a comment. Um, I was also very apprehensive about this as well, um, and worried that our, to our learners who have difficulty, if they'll be able to cope up versus our advanced readers who maybe will be not challenged enough. But I went into a classroom, I sat in with a couple of classrooms, and how the workshop model was taught, and, um, it definitely opened my eyes, um, as to how it can improve for all our kids, um, the reading. And even though it's not called honors, kids get to choose the level of reading that they want to do and then work well with everybody else. So it would be good for us to pass on that message to the parents who are concerned about it.
You know, I, I, I guess my comment was around the same thing, and I think we'll get into this when we talk about chemistry as well. Um, I think it's very important as we roll this out, um, to spend time on the new way of teaching.
Yeah.
Because I think the paradigm in many of our heads, um, who've had kids, you know, that have gone through the program, is kind of the old, traditional way of teaching. And I think that's why studies show that it's difficult to mix kids of multiple abilities. The aha in this is the research that's been done probably over the past, you know, five to seven years of an entirely new role for the teacher and a new way of teaching, as well as a different set of responsibilities for students owning their learning. And I think, you know, to some of the comments that have been made, we have an obligation to help our community understand that, because I think, again, many of us have the paradigm of school that we had either with our older kids or when we went to school.
With us.
Where the teacher stands up at the front of the room and just sort of talks at you and gives you assignments to do when you either, you know, know how to do them or don't. And so I think it's really, really important that we kind of demonstrate the workshop model of teaching.
Thank you for that.
And, uh, oh, go ahead.
I'd say my, the other thing that I'm really excited about with this model is I think the, the workshop model is going to help our students, one, um, not rely on AI. When we talk about the idea of guaranteed prompts, like, I think the workshop model really is preparing students to, and teachers to see writing style, and, and I think that it's going to enable our staff to not feel threatened by, um, AI cheating, and I think that's something that's really important in this current moment. Um, and then the other thing is, um, as somebody who is a parent, who's had a kid in the pilot class and had kid in honors, I can see the, um, the rigor and the things that are happening in that pilot course that I'm really excited about to have for all of our students. And then also knowing the way that, um, AP 11 especially prepares our students for college writing, I'm really excited for more students to have an opportunity to take that class and, and see success in college. And so, um, I'm, I, I understand why it's, um, anything that's different is scary. So I understand that, but I'm really excited about the opportunities that this is going to provide. And I give kudos to all the teachers who are willing to dive into this new way of teaching, because it, it's, there's a learning curve, and it's, and I know that it's going to be hard for them, and I'm, I'm really proud of them for being willing to, to do this.
And then, um, I, I just have a, a question, and it kind of ties to my, and my 12 years on the board, every time that we have pulled the decision-making from administrators or teachers in terms of deciding what child gets to take which class, and put that back in the hands of the student and their parents, I've seen that we've expanded the number of students who have taken advanced classes with no corresponding dip in performance, which tells me we're not that good at picking winners and losers, and that we should maybe step out of that business. And I, so I'm really excited about this. So I was wondering if you can talk a little bit about how you see the electives potentially evolving for 11th and 12th grade because of this shift in 9th and 10th?
Um, we are, we're actually quite excited about the opportunity ahead of us. One of the, um, I think one of the core slides that we've shared in the past with the board that is not in this slide deck is, um, looking at the different pathways for students and the evolution of pathway. So, um, currently structured, uh, when a student starts at the high school, there's one pathway that they're set on where they, um, don't have a lot of choice to be able to move through that pathway, um, until their junior or senior year. And even then, it's a limited amount of choice. Our hope is that, um, as we build this new process for our high school, all of our students will have a really solid foundation in 9th and 10th grade, and then be able to launch, we like to call it, at 11th grade, where those choices then vary from AP to we like to call it at 11th grade, where those choices then vary from AP to a college preparation standard 11th grade English course, to some more nuanced, maybe genre-specific electives for students to be able to dig into based on their passion and what they're interested in. And then in 12th grade, even further choice. We know that really by the beginning of 12th grade, as students are launching to write those college essays, they have many of those really strong foundational skills in ELA. And so providing additional choice even at that 12th grade marker is important to us. But I think it's important, we had actually a really wonderful day together with our high school English teachers that first Monday in, or that last Monday in January, January 31st, where they began to brainstorm the opportunities that were now ahead of them to provide students with choice. And there was a lot of excitement in the room because we talked about not only what 11th and 12th grade might look like, but also the additional electives that students could take as soon as ninth grade. So as a ninth grader, you can take a speech class as well as your English class and how we want to make sure that those electives and the enrichment opportunities for students around their passions continue early on as well as extend, extend when they're in 11th and 12th grade.
Okay, great, thank you. Any other questions on ELA? Okay, let's dive into chemistry.
Okay, so Chemistry One. So as you know, in 2015, the state of Michigan adopted the new NGSS, now known as the Michigan State Standards for Science. And part of that was really naming that all standards in science should be required for all students. So the life science standards, physical science standards and earth science standards. And so same thing, when we started to review ourselves, we recognized that not all of our students are currently required to achieve all of the standards in science. So depending on which coursework they choose, they might be missing some of the physical science standards, they might be missing some of the biology standards. So the, the review of science, but I know we're just talking about chemistry right now, but the review of science has really been about how do we come up with a structure where all students get all science standards. So Chemistry One is the first step in that. This will be a semester-long course. And then that also is a tweak to the revision of graduation requirements in that Chemistry One is the foundational chemistry course and then Chemistry Two is for students who want to pursue more of that learning. Again, we think it's important that all students, you know, it's, it's a requirement from the state, but we also think it's really important that in high school, students are exposed to lots of different types of experience and then they start to, as they go up in year zero and on what their interests and passions are. Questions on Chemistry One?
Questions on that? Do you want to talk a little bit about, or do we not want to talk about the other sort of how the, the different blocks will fit in for all four science areas as a result of this change?
Probably not yet because it won't impact, it won't impact any choices as we're going into next year. It'll be the following year because this year's incoming freshman will take biology. And so this chemistry tweak really has no impact to the trajectory. That'll be.
Okay, so I'll tell the public, stay tuned because this is part of a general overhauling of our science program, which is also very exciting to see.
Yes.
Because it's going to open up possibilities for, for multiple pathways for students where in the past, we've had to expect them to choose a, one pathway for their entire high school, basically, so.
I, I just want to clarify maybe for the audience, which is until now, our students were taking an entire year of chemistry.
Yes.
Now you have rearranged what is required by the state to fit in one semester and make it Chemistry One, so that you can account for the rest of sciences. And students can still take Chemistry Two an entire year if they want to.
Oh, absolutely, absolutely. Yep, so the size of the course was pretty much dictated by the number of standards in that discipline. So yes.
Great, thank you.
Okay, and then lastly, just an update to our course description for team sports, physical education. So what this is, is it's a phys ed class offered at our high school that they play team sports within that class. So soccer, volleyball. And so the past, at least since Christine and I have been here four years, it has not run for, for our girls because there were not enough girls who enrolled to run the course. Let me back up a second. Typically, we've run a boys' course and a girls' course. And there has not been enough girls who sign up in order to run the course. And so we are eliminating separate sections. We're allowing boys and girls both to participate in this co-ed phys ed class. And then that way, anyone who would desire to take the course will have that opportunity.
Great. Any questions?
Not a question, but just a comment because it came up during the workshop. So this is just to clarify, this has nothing to do with any requirement, taking away gender requirements for any team sports that are played at the high school level. This is specifically just for gym class in high school, making it much like every other gym class where it's co-ed.
Correct, it has nothing to do with the after-school or varsity sports.
And to be clear, do we have any other physical education classes that are co-ed?
We do.
That are co-ed? All co-ed? That's right. I want to make, yeah, let's be very clear on this. So this essentially clears up maybe the last thing left in our course that is not, or course book that is not co-ed, right? So now we have all of our physical education courses are co-ed. Okay. Just want to make sure we're clear on that. Okay.
If there are no other questions, I have a consideration to read for the board.
I think we're good. Yep. Yes? Yeah, go ahead.
The Troy School District seeks, seeks to provide broad, rich, and robust course offerings that inspire, are intellectually challenging, and open more opportunities for future learning. The high school course description book is updated each year to reflect changes in curriculum and our programming. The Board of Education is asked to review proposed changes and adopt the high school course description book. High school department heads work in partnership with TSD curriculum instruction specialists, counselors, and administrators to recommend changes. Significant changes are shared with parents during curriculum night in the spring and in the fall. The course description book is also shared with parents during the scheduling process.
All right, great. So we're being asked to consider adopting the new high school course description book. Have a resolution, please. Dr. Wilson?
Be it therefore resolved that the Troy Board of Education approves the proposed changes and adopts the 2023-2024 High School Course Description Book, yes, present.
Support.
Okay, I'll go with Dr. Philip Hart on that. Okay, have resolution by Dr. Wilson, supported by Dr. Philip Hart. Any questions or comments on that?
Thank you for all of the hard work that I know goes into all the behind the scenes, all the meetings, all the research.
All the piloting.
Yeah, I know that this, this is not just something that somebody, you know, read in a magazine and was like, it would be fun. I know there are years of work that went into this, so thank you to all involved.
Anyone else? All right, seeing none. Sorry about that, Matt. All those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Yes, opposed, say no. Thank you, resolution passes. Okay. I believe it's Mr. West's turn at the microphone. Good evening, Mr. West.
Good evening. One item for your consideration?
Just one?
Just one tonight.
Come on.
A site work paving projects. We did have a robust conversation at last week's workshop. Also worthy, before I get into the consideration, just to let the general public know and remind the board, when we're planning out these projects, we take into consideration asset preservation and the return on, not only the return on investment, but the logistics related to any other future projects that we're working on. For instance, we're not going to put in a new parking lot if we're going to be doing major renovations to a building. So we take that all into consideration and that has gone into our consideration or recommendation tonight. ARFP was issued to obtain competitive bids for site work at Barnard, Leonard, Schroeder, and Wos Elementary Schools, Larson Middle, Athens High, Troy Learning Center, and the transportation sites. Bid responses were reviewed by TSD Operations Department, PEA, and Lee Cole Planners, our owners rep. It's recommended the bid be awarded as stated below.
Okay, thank you. We're being asked to consider supporting paving projects across the district. Have a resolution, please. Dr. Philip Hart?
Be it therefore resolved that the bid site work paving program be awarded to Nagel Paving in the amount of $2,246,617, inclusive of a 6% contingency, and that the amount be approved as an expenditure of the building site and sinking fund and capital projects fund.
Seconded by Mr. Hopt. Thank you. I have resolution by Dr. Philip Hart, supported by Mr. Hopt. Is, are there any questions or comments on this? I see none. All those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Yes, opposed, say no. Thank you, resolution passes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. West. All right, that takes us to the two student reports, I think.
Three.
The three that are left, that's right. Nish, would you like to tell us what's going on at Troy High?
All right, can everyone hear me?
Yeah.
All right, I want to make sure I can still be heard. So essentially at Troy High, one of our most recent events that we had this past week was our activist week. Our charity that we supported was Colts for a Cause, which is essentially going to be used to help support struggling Troy High Colts in our school itself. And we're still adding up last minute donations as today was this event called Crush for Your Crush due to Valentine's Day. So we're still adding up the-
Big moneymaker.
We're still adding up the final amount from that, but so far, as of the afternoon today, we have raised over $34,000 for our activist week. And so these funds, like I said, will go to help students at Troy High that may be struggling and need support. And so kind of a breakdown of our activist week so far, on last week, Tuesday, we had our coin stall event. And this was our most popular event for obvious reasons. And so we raised over $14,000 from that event. And that was actually our largest moneymaker for this, our activist week. And then we had our second annual Survivor Series, which aired every day of the week last week. And thanks to the film club who recorded that every week and posted it to the YouTube, for that, we raised over $6,000 due to donations coming in to help support the people competing in Survivor. And then after that, we raised over $4,000 with this brand new event that we had called Take It to Skip It. And that was on Friday last week, along with our pep assembly. And then on Saturday, February the 11th, we had our snow coming dance, which was a really fun event to go to. And some of the upcoming events that are coming up, we have our middle school leadership conference where middle school students can come to Troy High and get a little bit of experience with the whole student government process. As well as two groups of students on February 24th to the 27th of this month, will be heading to the MASC slash MAHS State Leadership Conference in Grand Rapids, which is essentially Stugoe State. And a couple of sporting announcements, we had Troy High, a couple of our biggest sporting events these past couple of weeks were the Troy High Swim Team where they took on Athens. And then we also had our wrestling team win districts for the first time back-to-back since 2005 and 2006. So that was a really nice win to celebrate. Along with that, on the day of snow coming, our forensics team went to Bertrand to compete at a forensics invitational where they took second place overall as a team, which was a very nice accomplishment for them. And finally, to wrap it all up, this week, actually starting today all the way till next week, we have scheduling for freshmen all the way to juniors. And so essentially, freshmen, sophomores, and juniors are all spending the week getting recommendations from their teachers and uploading their course requests into power schools, which will then be processed next week. But that's all at Troy High.
So when do the seniors? Oh, but you're a junior, yeah, no, I'm sorry. Sorry, I'm not tracking. Okay. All right, great. Any questions for Nish other than my stupid one? Okay.
I have a question for Nish. So usually you guys choose a charity to donate to. This time you chose your own, Colts for a Cause. So I was wondering, I mean, what, how exactly, how is that money going to be spent? Like what kind of student activities you're going to use it for? You said help needy students, things that we as a school haven't been providing them? Just curious.
Yeah, so part of these funds will, again, just kind of going off the, what we know so far, part of this funds would help support students in after-school tutoring and sort of these other outside of, for students that essentially need some academic support with our school, these would go to them. It would also go to our ASD, supporting our ASD students and helping them with their learning because I know sometimes would struggle, learning disabilities can sometimes struggle. So going with that, as well as with the whole kind of process of mental health, going towards supporting those and having kind of programs to help build the mental stability among students to ensure the mental health is among, it's strong among students at Troy High.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, good. Sarah, you want to tell us what's going on at Athens?
Yes, hello everyone. It is my pleasure to be representing Athens High School today for the February board meeting. To start off, the last month, our science Olympiad team acquired a fourth place title overall and had many of our Red Hawks placed in individual events. In our theater department, three of our Athens students auditioned for scholarships through the Association Michigan Thespians and were given a chance to receive over $1 million in scholarship money. In sports, four of our powerlifting teams took first place at our home regional meet on January 21st. A variety of our students qualified for states and numerous records were broken. Our Japanese department hosted a presentation over Zoom with students in Japan regarding a peace study about the US military president, presence in Okinawa, in Okinawa. In media art, we had two of our students receive Scholastic Art Awards for ceramics, painting, illustration, and digital art. We recently received the news that Michelle Nardi won $2,500 through the Suburban Collection Focus on the Road PSA competition, and we would like to congratulate them on their educational journey. On February 27th, Athens will partner with the Anti-Defamation League to launch a school-wide initiative called No Place for Hate. Through this program, we hope to make our school more inclusive and minimize any negative occurrences. The Ukrainian club sold blue and yellow bracelets to support those in Ukraine struggling during the war. And MSA is hosting a bake sale in order to raise money for those in Syria and Turkey struggling with the recent earthquakes that have shaken the lives of many people. This week, we are supporting Carol's Angels, Carol's Angels and Warriors for Charity Week 2023. This nonprofit organization specializes in giving resources and spreading awareness for those who are struggling in abusive relationship. We chose to support this organization based on the resources they provide for many people struggling, as well as financial help they provide. They offer services such as direct cash assistance and have minimal barriers for people who seek help. As Red Hawks, we have made it an important part of our character to continuously assist our community. This week, we have several events such as different restaurant nights, pancake breakfast, hypnosis shows, coin stalls, a volleyball tournament, jail unveil, the charity ball, and our infamous Mr. Athens, which is going to be held this Thursday night. Be sure to come support Athens at these events as all are welcome. You may buy a community pass or donate online, and the links are found on our website or you can buy them through school pay. We would love to see you there. Thank you all and have a good night.
All right, thank you. Any questions for Sarah? Okay, Yara, you're up.
Hey, good evening, ladies and gentlemen, members of the board. Things are going great at the International Academy as always. Our school is so excited to celebrate Ms. Russell, Ms. Cuddy, and Mrs. Beskey for having been nominated for Teacher of the Year in Troy School District. Each of these three teachers do so much for our school community in and out of the classroom. They work tirelessly to provide a world-class experience for all students in math, literature, and science, but also in forensics, ICA, house council, senior class activities, and more. We couldn't be more proud of them. On Saturday, February 4th, the science Olympiad team competed in their second invitational against 29 other teams at Salem High School in Canton. The white team placed seventh overall and the blue team placed 19th overall, where we also had over 20 students placed in the top five of their event. As for athletics, I is proud of our Athens boy swimmers and divers presented on senior night. Congratulations to Kyle Wen, Michael Yu, and Andrew Hadad. Kyle will also be competing at OAA League Championships in a few weeks. We'd also like to congratulate our music students who participated in solo and ensemble in January and February. We had 16 students participating at two separate events, one in January for choir solo and, and ensemble, and one in February for band and orchestra. Students performed for judges and received scores based on tone, intonation, rhythm, technique, choir addiction, and musical interpretation. We had 10 students receive a first division rating in which they are now eligible for the state festival in March, and five students received a second division rating. Last week on the half day, our school went and took an ice skating trip at the Troy Sports Center ice rink where we all collectively had fun and enjoyed some physical activity. Just today, our juniors had their first of many meetings for their IB extended essay. The EE is a 4,000-word independent research paper that all students complete as a requirement of earning their IB diploma, where students focus their paper on a specific subject area and develop a research question to explore some aspect of their topic in a detailed way. This week, we have Spirit Week for our annual Winter Olympics competition on Friday. Similar to our Fall Olympics, we will be organizing indoor and outdoor events and competing in houses once again. Lastly, a group of students and staff are participating with a national equity project at IES to look at opportunities to continue to make our school more welcoming and inclusive. They are now holding monthly week, meetings and hosting listening sessions with students. It's a busy month and we are excited to head off to mid-winter break. Thank you and happy Valentine's Day.
Great, I was just, I was just asking Dr. Macheski if NEP was, was all of I or just our buildings? It sounds like it's just our building, Mr. Macheski. Questions? Did you have some?
Lots of exciting things.
Lots of, always lots of exciting things. Thanks, Yara. Okay, we'll go to the, the boring adults now. Other, not you, me. Dr. Philip Hart?
I just again want to say congratulations and thank you how much our principals, our building principals are appreciated for all of the, the things that they do for our learning for all of the things that they do for our learning community on a day-to-day basis. So it's great this month to actually be able to formally honor them. And I guess the other thing I just want to say, I continue to be so impressed with the spirit of giving in communities in our high schools. You know, the time, the energy, the amounts of money that you raise, the thoughtfulness you put into, you know, how you're going to spend that money to do good. You just, you give me hope for the future, because I'm so proud of, you know, that spirit of community and caring for others that I hear you demonstrate in our buildings day-to-day. So, thank you, and make sure you tell your fellow classmates that you give us older adults a lot of confidence.
Yeah.
I also have similar sentiments to that. I know that a lot of students worked, you know, early mornings, late nights. There's been a lot of parent volunteers, a lot of teachers, working on these charity weeks. And so I don't want to downplay how much you, how much work you guys are putting into it. It's a lot of work, but it's for a good cause. You guys are having fun, it seems like, so thank you for doing all that you do.
Great, Sunny?
I want to start off with actually congratulating all our Teacher of the Year winners, as well as all the nominees that happened in the last, this month, I guess? So I know all our teachers need recognition, but especially the ones who have been chosen to be, from the students and from the community, to be the beacons of all, for everybody, as a great teacher. So congratulations to all of them and all the hard work they put in. I was also at the Troy High Orchestra Gala. Man, that was a great show. All the way from the organizing to the concert itself and the music, amazing performance. And these students, just like Dr., just like she was saying, Dr. Philip Hart was saying, they not only are charitable, they work so hard. That morning, they actually went and did the Festival of Orchestras and actually performed and got their medals, and then came back and performed at the Orchestra Gala and did an amazing job. And everybody in the parents, everyone, have put together a great show. It was amazing. And they actually went around and got the restaurants all around Troy to donate so much food for everybody to be fed as well, and it was an amazing event. So congratulations to all the Troy High Orchestra for doing that. I also want to touch base on the conference I've gone to. I know a few of us have gone to the advocacy conference in Washington DC. It felt good, because I know a lot of companies send, pay a lot of money to advocate for whatever they want, but our students don't get a whole lot of advocates at the government level. So it was good to have us be there and be the advocates for our students and wanting, asking for what our students need from our federal elected officials. So this is my very first one that I've gone to, and it was a great, great experience. We got to meet all the congressmen who represent us in Oakland County, as well as the two senators, and we got to ask them, or at least put in our request for what we think our students need, and hopefully they will follow up with some, some of the things that we have asked for, like funding for our IDEA funding, which they have mandated us to do some stuff, but never funded for that, and a variety of other things. So that's all I have.
Okay, great. Ms. Leach?
So I want to say something that, you know, might not be directly related to what we've talked about tonight, but we did have a tragedies estate last night and this morning. A lot of our own families are affected by it. They have students there, we have students who might go there next year. And I don't want to get to the point where we, as a community, become numb and are able to go through a day in a meeting like this, as if something so horrific didn't happen. There are students who lived through Oxford last year, and now, a year and a few months later, lived through the tragedy in East Lansing last night. So it's, it is what we are living through. It's related to us too, because it's something that we, as a district, have to think about, the safety of all the students that walk through our doors. But I didn't want to walk out of here tonight and not mention it, because we can't become, we can't become numb to it. It's our, unfortunately, it's our reality, and as a community, we're going to have to figure out how to, how to not have it ever become normal, but.
Thank you. Mr. Huff?
Each week, or thereabouts, we get a newspaper in the mail, Troy Times, and there's a supplement on the Troy Schools Roundup. You can spend an hour or two going through all the articles, and they're absolutely wonderful. One of the articles that struck me as really special, to me at least, is an article talking about the Larson Middle School naming, being named the number-one middle school in Michigan by the American Heart Association for their efforts in raising funds and awareness. The article goes on to say, after several years working their way to the top of the list, physical education teachers Alfred, Alfred, Kat Holtz, and Andrea Lotheian were proud to leave the effort that not only got them to number-one at Larson after holding a dodgeball for the Heart Association Tournament and raised over ten thousand dollars to support the AHA. The article goes on to say that they helped facilitate collecting forty-five blood donations, which will help one hundred and thirty-five patients. That is very important. And to have us, in the Troy School District, have a, have a middle school under Principal Duda that is named number-one middle school in the state of Michigan by the, by the American Heart Association, says quite a lot, and I'm very proud of it.
Great, thank you. Dr. Wilson?
Yeah, I think adding on to what Mrs. Leach said, the tragedy last night, it was, yesterday, I was at Espresso Yourself at Athens, and several of us parents were commenting on just the amazing atmosphere of that event, and just how fortunate our kids are to be able to be in an environment where they can take risks and be seen. And, and so then the contrast to go home and see the tragedy that had unfolded and to know that, I think, one of the things that, that people so badly want is to be seen and noticed. And so I want to commend all of our principals and teachers and students for the ways that they try to see and support one another. And I also want to advocate for kids who maybe don't feel seen to, to have the courage to reach out to an adult, reach out to a counselor to, to get the help that they might need. And so I do want to make sure that we don't take those kinds of situations for granted and become numb to them. I do want to give kudos to all the kids who are working so hard to raise money and having fun while they do it, because it's, it's a blast to watch. I'm excited to come see Mr. Athens this weekend. Those are always really entertaining events, so if you're bored on Thursday, come, come cheer. I promise it will be great entertainment. I also was able to go to the Orchestra Gala, and one of the things that I really appreciate about the district, as well as the way that they partner with universities. And so it was amazing to, to see the orchestra bring in a pianist from Oakland University, and just to see the way that we use university partnerships in the arts, to use university partnerships to help our reading curriculum, our science curriculum. And I'm just, I'm grateful that we're in an area that is rich with higher education, and so we can, can partner with universities around the, around the area and just do that work together. And so thank you to the community for the way you're supporting our charities and our students and our musicians, and just keep seeing and loving the people you're with. Happy Valentine's.
Thank you. Dr. Macheski?
Yeah, just a couple of things, and thanks to Mrs. Leach and Dr. Wilson for your comments regarding the incidents last evening in East Lansing. And you've said it better than, than I can, so I'm going to leave it at that. Thank you for those comments. The, important for the community to know that, the, our bond work continues in earnest across the district. We have bond planning teams, as well as pre-design meetings that are underway almost daily now, it seems. Meetings are taking place with our middle schools, our playgrounds, at the, at the elementary, furniture, our athletic facilities at the secondary level. So there's a ton going on. We are hitting the ground running full speed, so we're really excited about that. Important for our community to know that those resources are going to be spent wisely as we, we move forward and in support of our students for, for a long, great many years here in the Troy School District. Just to make mention, that Teacher of the Year was mentioned, and it is, to be completely honest, it's, it's one of the best days of the year for me. The first day of the school year is, is great, and the last day, of course, is, is really good. But in the middle, you do get this, these, these opportunities that are really unscripted, and you never know how it's going to go. But the surprising our Teachers of the Year is, is one of the best days of the year. We were able to do that on February third. And we're going to, we will get, as a board and a community, we'll be able to celebrate all of our nominees and winners in April, is when we bring those folks to the board. But I would strongly encourage anyone, if you have not yet taken advantage of the district's Facebook, Twitter, or YouTube page, I encourage you to do so. And you just, just search Teacher of the Year, and you'll see a video that was put together by Creative Guild as we surprised each of those four teachers. Mr. Baragazi at, at Athens, Mrs. Gibnowski at, I think I said that right, at Larson, and Pat Grandy at the preschool. And then our overall winner was our elementary winner this year, Karen Rosehorn at Leonard. So I strongly encourage everyone to go and look at that video. It's really well done, and, and you can just feel the energy and, and the admiration for all of our Teachers of the Year. March is Reading Month, so when we get together next, many of you likely have already been in some classrooms reading. So encouraging anyone who has that opportunity to get out to the R Elementary Schools and, and read to those kiddos, because they really do appreciate it. And our teachers really enjoy those guest readers coming in to support them. Lastly, I guess I will mention that we are, applications are currently out for Outstanding Support Staff Person of the Year. So we're looking forward to, every year, we have an opportunity to celebrate our support staff person. So those applications are out at this point. Nominations, I guess I should say, are out. And we're looking forward, we'll be looking forward to surprising those individuals in the near, in the near future. And lastly, I'll just mention, next Monday and Tuesday, our midwinter break. I know we don't need to remind our students of that, likely our teachers of that, but for the community's benefit, next Monday and Tuesday will be midwinter break.
Okay, great, well, everyone's taking all my stuff here as I go through. But I do want to just go back and just touch on the Advocacy Institute, just so people understand that, that going to Washington DC actually was very time-efficient in, in terms of our ability to, to understand all the issues and be able to talk to our representatives about that. The National School Board Association actually puts together two days of seminars so that we can understand emerging issues in the country, looking at funding issues, looking at things that are going to impact us, and, and giving us kind of the ammunition to, to go in and talk to Congress. This year, I want to, a shout-out to the K-12 Alliance, which is now five counties in southeast Michigan?
At least five, if not six.
So, five to six of, of the counties in southeast Michigan have, we've kind of combined into this alliance for advocating for public education. And this year, the K-12 Alliance made an arrangement in, in cooperation with Haley Stevens' office to get us a room in the Capitol Building and then bring our representatives from southeast Michigan to us. So that allowed us, we had about thirty people from all around the tri-county area, and we met with nine representatives, seven representatives plus the two senators, in one eight-hour day. And they basically came in, and on the half-hour, it left, the next ones came in. And, and it allowed us to have some really powerful conversations. We focused on five issues. The first thing we focused on was convincing the federal government to meet a promise that they have failed to meet for the last forty-eight years. So in nineteen seventy-five, the federal government said that they would, moving forward, they would fund forty percent of the special education costs for our students across the country. And in the last forty-eight years, they've never hit the forty percent that they promised. The closest they've come is about fourteen percent. And I think that's what we were last year, was fourteen percent. So they're funding special ed at one-third of what they promised. And what that means to us is that we still have to provide the services, and then we have to figure out other ways of funding those services. So in the, in the case of Troy School District, last year, that reached a tune of five million dollars that we had to pull out of general education funds in order to supplement for the, for the lack of funding from the federal government. So when the federal government doesn't fund special education properly, they cause us to underfund all students in our district. So that, that's, you could tell which, which thing I talked about most with our representatives. But I think that that's an area where we, that the government needs to meet its promises. And it made a promise when I was eleven years old, that it was going to do this, and it has, it failed my generation, it failed my kids' generation. And I'm anticipating in the next couple of years, if they don't move, they're going to fail my grandchildren's generation. So we're really pushing them to, to do that. Four other things we talked about with, with every representative. We talked about expanding free lunches for kids to, from what it is today. We talked about preserving or expanding Title I funding. We talked about, yeah, staffing shortages that we have. The other thing we talked about, and Ms. Anay actually led the effort on this, which is expanding our access to pilot programs for electric buses. Because they're starting to build electric buses, the cost is prohibitive right now. We want to be able to have one or two of these in our fleet to begin to see what does it look like? What, you know, is, is this a form of transportation that would end up paying for itself over the lifetime of the, of the bus? And we don't have the funds to purchase these outright. And we talked to our representatives about priorities that were set for which, which districts are, have been provided buses under grants to date, and asked them to expand that so that we had an opportunity to actually try this technology. So, great conversations by everybody, and, and it was a really, I think, a powerful three days there as we went through. So I wanted to thank K-12 Alliance for helping make that as efficient as we can. I wanted to do a shout-out to Carrie Birmingham and her staff for the Troy Times insert that Mr. Huff was talking about, because I think every time one of these comes out, it looks better than the one before. This one was, was, I know we've kind of taken over the layout, and you can tell, because the layout was better. You know, we brought that in-house. But I, I closed, I actually finally had time last night to read it cover to cover, like Gary just said. And I closed the last cover and went, I challenge any district in the state to put together this kind of story. It was so exciting to see everything that's going on across the district and, and the, to demonstrate the, the joy of learning in the district. And that's what I think it did really well this time as we went through. And I, I thought, for the broader community who just kicked in the money, a half a billion dollars for us, what a great first publication to come out after that bond passing. Because it really just emphasized, we are, we're full speed ahead, man. We're, we got lots of exciting stuff that we're doing. Related to that, the Creative Guild and the, the videos that the Creative Guild keeps putting out are getting better and better and better. We're getting more and more and more of them. And I thought, what a cool way that we've tapped into these incredibly talented kids to tell our story out in, in social media. So thanks to the Creative Guild folks that are doing that. And then the last thing I wanted to talk about was, my heart's aching for the, the families of our MSU students that we lost. And I'm sure everybody in the room here, their heart is aching. I got a text from one of my closest friends, who lives in Gross Point, and one of the three boys that died was a very close friend of his daughter's. And he sent me a picture of him at the MSU Wisconsin football game last fall, because his daughter goes to Wisconsin, and she came for the game. And, and, and he just said they're, they're beside themselves right now. And he said he was, there couldn't have been a nicer man with more potential. And as we were giving out our certificates tonight, he looked and acted and, and was an example that, that was interchangeable with the outstanding students that we honor tonight. And I, I can't imagine if we lost any of those kids to something like this. So I agree, we can't be silent about this. We have to continue to push for, for support, to try to figure out ways to stop this from happening. And I think that's the, the only thing, we just have to keep pushing to try to get our legislators to do the right thing. So, I don't have an answer for everybody, but I just, I felt the same way as you did, that, that we needed to say something about it tonight, and keep talking about it to everybody who'll listen. Okay, so that's, sorry to end on a downer there, but I think it's important that we, we say that publicly. So, thank you for passing the important things. We have a board workshop on March seventh at six o'clock in the, the central office. office building. On March eleventh, uh, it's a Saturday morning, if you're really bored on the Saturday and want to, want to, uh, spend it with us, we're going to do, um, a retreat and explore, um, budget, uh, budgetary issues, and we're going to look at Portrait of a Graduate work. Uh, and then on March twenty-first, we'll be back here at seven P.M. for our, um, regular board meeting. All right, I think that's it. Did I forget anything? Are we good? Okay, all right, thank you. I, I think we're adjourned, dismissed. Thank you all.